Evening, welcome to tonight's meeting of Bethlehem City Council for Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Please call the roll.
Mr. Callahan. Mr. Cologne.
Present.
Mr. Ramsey Smith.
Present.
Mr. Groan.
Present.
Mr. Reynolds.
Present.
Dr. Van Werken.
Present.
Mr. Waldron.
Present. Speaking of approval of the minutes for October 5th, no comments from members of council, the minutes will stand approved. Moving to first public comment on any subject not being voted on this evening, five-minute time limit. One speaker previously signed up, and then anyone else in the room would like to make comment, may do so. First speaker is George Kimball. Step up, sir. If you could please, your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments to council with a five-minute time limit. Thank you.
Oh, this thing I didn't have to adjust today. I'm not going to bore you. We're talking about the Walnut Street Garage, oh, George Kimball, and I live in 645 Main Street in Bethlehem. I'm not going to bore you like I did last meeting about Walnut Street Garage, but I am going to talk to you about something that I'm concerned about, that garage. You're going to be replacing it with a new garage, as far as I understand, on Third Street and Polk, on the South Side. Now, if the South Side needs a parking garage, that's well and good. Build a parking lot. But what are you going to do with the people on the North Side? You must have, I would guess, 500, 1,000 apartments on the North Side that live in the commercial district. They can't park on the street. All the streets, if it's residential, is assigned parking spaces on the street. But on the commercial side, if you live in one of those apartments, you can't park on the street. You have to park in a garage. Are you, do you have any plans on how the people that use the garage are going to get to the South Side and park their car? Or doesn't that make any difference? And that's the problem. You're tearing down, you knew that garage was coming down years ago. You could have taken the Boyd Street Theater and all those stores that had been condemned for years through mode. You could have put up a garage there. You could take behind the brew works. There's a two-story garage back there. The first floor is for people that have, they were assigned spaces on that first floor. The second floor is open for public parking. You could have taken, you could have condemned it, because the city is going to condemn things. You could have taken that parking lot and condemned it and built a real high-rise parking lot, but you didn't do it. The Walnut Street Garage has been fallen down for years, and you're taking a Band-Aid now, and you're fixing it with a Band-Aid when that garage is tamaging. This has been going on too long. What are you going to do about the parking for all the people that live in the commercial section in Bethlehem? That's about all this week, but I'll be back at the next meeting because I got something else to say. And I know I only got 15 minutes to talk, so we'll get into it next time.
Mr. Kimball, just to clarify, city council took no action on the Polk Street Garage. We were not involved in that decision or process at all. Furthermore, the Walnut Street Garage has no pending legislation before us or in the near future, as far as we are aware, and no requests have been made of council to review that. If you want to talk specifically about parking displacement, I would encourage you to attend one of the Parking Authority meetings. You can find those meetings posted on their website of when those meetings would be, and those are the folks who will be making decisions about if Walnut Street is to come down and the process of reallocating those spaces.
Well, then you're telling me that the Walnut Street Garage has no plans to be torn down.
That's not what I said. I said that we have no legislation in front of council. We can only make decisions on things that are in front of us. The Parking Authority and that board will be the folks who make that decision.
What about the approval to build the parking lot on Third Street and Polk? Is that from the sport?
We had no decision in that process.
You don't?
No, that's the Parking Authority and the administration, under the guidance of the mayor.
Are you telling me that the Parking Authority has a free hand to do anything they want in Bethlehem?
No, sir.
Sounds like it.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
Two comments, one on the Polk Street Garage. The Polk Street Garage will start construction probably sometime in '22, 12-month construction period of time, 715-car space to have about 650 leases. Walnut Street is scheduled to be replaced probably in the ballpark of 2023. So there's a committee that will be looking at that, the next administration will be, because that could be transformational for that block, especially with the Boyd Project that's been announced. But Walnut Street is scheduled to be demolished and rebuilt.
You know, I dropped off a bunch of pictures to your office of the Walnut Street Garage. That garage has not deteriorated overnight. It's taken that garage a long time to get to the shapers' end. What they're doing is they're replacing the concrete. I think that was precast concrete that was used when they built that 40 years ago.
Mr. Kimball, if you could address your comments to council, and we are over our five-minute time limit. I would just say, though, this is an issue that you should approach to the Parking Authority Board. They have public meetings similar to this, where you'd be able to address your concerns and possibly get some answers from the folks who are making those decisions. City council is not involved in that process.
All right. Well, I've tried go before the Parking Authority Board, and that's like talking to that wall. But anyway, thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make comment on any subject not on tonight's agenda? Yes, Mr. Antalics?
I wish you would start the clock when I'm ready to speak. You're ready, call me 10 seconds. Stephen Antalics, 77 Ridge, 121 Butzton Road. I have in front of me quite a few number of plans, and they all have to do with the South Side. South Side Historic District. Community generated plan for the South Side. South Side Master Plan. South Side Make It Happen. Tenure Strategic Neighborhood Revitalization of Bethlehem's South Side. Bethlehem's South Side. City of Bethlehem Historic Preservation of the South Side. It's quite impressive. But also, the Suzuki Report, very expensive, addresses South Side. And it said that the health of the community is dependent upon a core residential, single-family dwelling. But core residential, single-family dwelling on the South Side includes Carlton, Windott, Berkel, Van Buren, Fillmore, Hayes, a few others. But what happened? The city wisely, in their definitions, called "single-family" unrelated. And that core district is now student housing. So they've gone from stable community to a transient student. But also, in these studies, the city also passed an ordinance, 1714, to delineate what is historic on the South Side. But you approved a nine-story building on Fourth Street. You approved a six-story building at Third and New. You approved an eight-story building, nine-story building at New Street, rather, on Third Street, and an eight-story building on New Street. Which is totally violation of 1714 and all of these plans, which said what I just said. You don't do that. So who suffered? The South Side has suffered. And all that's happened on the South Side is against the will of the people on the South Side because their opinion has been solicited. And you have voted against the will of the South Side. So clearly, something has to be done about the South Side. And from history, I think the best way to cure the South Side is to get rid of the South Side. Because if any of these situations happen on the North Side in the historic area of Church and Wall Street, you practically need a resolution from council here to be able to sneeze. So how can we get rid of the South Side? With all this money being given out by the federal government, you might consider this as an option which might work. Bypass the Lehigh River. If you bypass the Lehigh River, you don't have a South Side. You have a City of Bethlehem. So you've done the community service. It's absurd, but equally, what has been happening to the South Side is equally absurd. Complete disregard and disrespect for that area and for the people of the South Side. The point of order, last council meeting, at one point, there were only three people sitting at that table because a number of council members had vacated the room with a chamber. And there was no quorum. So the point of order, at that point, and also, the solicitor also vacated the chamber. So only three members were sitting there, which is not a quorum. Should the meeting been held up? Oh, well.
Anyone else like to make comment on the subject not being voted on this evening? Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name's Kendall. I live at 304 West 8th Street. So I want to talk today about runoff. And I've been living in Bethlehem for four years now. I go to Lehigh University, and South Side has a lot of developed mountainous area where, when it rains, it is just like a river in the street. And considering climate change, you know, we're all hearing about Coke 26, which is happening now, and it's not just something that is abstracted in the future and can be dealt with later on. I know Bethlehem has a climate action plan, and I have a recommendation that I think would be really helpful for dealing with the issue of runoff. Runoff is polluting the Lehigh River. It's flooding. It's causing a lot of harm. And I've been researching this issue because I'm realizing that it's just a big problem here. And so, looking at the capital management plan, there's a lot of fixes to the really decrepit stormwater system we have here. I know we have a combined sewer system, and I know there was a facility built in 2016 to deal with overflow events, and that is one step in the right direction. I know they just passed the Stormwater Management Fee, which shows that the city has some commitment to recognizing the problem with impervious surfaces and causing runoff, and how there's more of a need to manage the stormwater here, because it's not just environmental, it's economic, and it also is a health issue and a safety issue. And there's a lot of fixes done to different couch basins or to pipes that have leaks for one reason or another, and, or no, I know the reason. It's listed, and most of them, it's flooding. And I think just by solely having a plan to repair the pipe does not address the problem. It is like a Band-Aid, and if there's going to be more intense flooding in the future, then the pipes are just going to be needed to be repaired again and sooner. And I think that there is a solution that is recognized by the city as a best management practice, which is green infrastructure, which is just basically using plant soil, other natural techniques to filter, store, and use up water through evaporatranspiration. And so I think that it's already recognized by the city, but it needs to be implemented in cases that aren't just directly looking to manage stormwater. I think it needs to be looked at. I think every new development of the city needs to be looked at through the lens of, can we implement any green stormwater infrastructure here? Because there's so many opportunities. The Activate Broad Street Transportation Plan, for example, has a lot of curb bump outs to protect people when they're trying to cross the street. You know, make that into a stormwater bump out, and you can store water. You can stop as much flooding in the street. You know, there's a lot of plans for other street renovations, like turning, I think, Linden into a two-way street instead of just a one-way street. And by not looking at every single time that the city is going to break ground as an opportunity to implement this really cost-effective technology, you know, the EPA did a, on their website, they have a study that synthesizes case studies throughout America of cities that have used green stormwater infrastructure, and they've shown that it's 15% to 80% less saves on costs upfront, and that is only better over time. And there's also a lot of other benefits that just traditional infrastructure doesn't. So when we just focus on fixing a pipe, we really, it's just irresponsible to only spend the money doing that and not look at, how can we do something that will actually address the problem, which is flooding, and address the problem, which is runoff? And rather than just, okay, let's fix the pipe so that, or let's make the pipe bigger so that I can handle all the water that's going through it, because then that still pollutes the river, and that still makes Bethlehem a less attractive place. You know, we wanted it to be a growing hub. And frankly, when you just don't have the overall, like, point of view, the overall lens of sustainability, when you look at actions that aren't just specifically, oh, this is an action, this is something we're looking at that's for, you know, like, creating green space. When you look at every single development or every single action through that lens, that's really when you can be more cost-effective, implement more, and actually store water. You know, Philadelphia has a huge green stormwater infrastructure program, and they've managed 2.7 billion gallons since implementing it in 2011. Lancaster is not, you know, they're more of a normal city like Bethlehem, and they manage 32.3 million gallons annually. And they had such a big program because they let out into the Chesapeake Bay, you know, and there was a lot of support for that. But Bethlehem doesn't let out into the Chesapeake Bay. We still matter, and our waterways still matter and should be respected and should be, you know, cared for if there's pollutants or not. So I would just suggest that we should evaluate every opportunity for, we should evaluate opportunity for green stormwater infrastructure and all new developments, you know, whether they're for maintenance of a pipe or whether they're for, like, a street renovation or something like that, because there are opportunities everywhere. It's simple, simple technology, you know. It's planting a tree with some soil and some gravel underneath, and that counts because over time, it stores stormwater that stops, you know, it doesn't have much of an effect on the pipes, so those will last longer. And it also keeps the streets from flooding. And it also, you know, in turn makes Bethlehem a more appealing place for people to live and increases property value. It greens the streets. It increases the tree canopy, which has, you know, other positive effects besides stuff like safety, happiness, well-being, more desire for people to move there. There's also, you know, the heat island effect that makes it really hot. And when there's more trees, it's less hot. And, you know, that also goes into an issue of environmental justice, because it would maybe allow for places that don't have a lot of greenery to have more greenery, which I think we all would like. And it addresses, implementing more green stormwater infrastructure would address a lot of points in the Climate Action Plan. So it is something that is not just like a one-stop. It covers a lot of different things that the city has shown that they care about and care about adapting to climate change in the future and care about mitigating problems of flooding that are going to be detrimental to the community soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I've never been here before, but can I give you a handout? I've written down some things that I prepared.
And we did get your email earlier.
Did you read it?
No.
Okay, I'll give it to you then.
Thank you. Still have it, though. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment on any subject not being voted on this evening? Is there anyone in attendance this evening who'd like to make comment on any resolution or ordinance to be voted on this evening? Moving to Communications. Communication 6A.
Memorandum from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with Enden Stanton Inc., EBA, BSI Electrical Contractors for Wastewater Treatment Plant, West Influent Pump Room Upgrades, Electrical Construction. The term runs 270 days to substantial completion and 300 days to final completion from the notice to proceed. The cost is $515,000, and there are no renewals.
Resolution 10A is on the agenda. Communication 6B.
Memorandum from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with Eastern Environmental Contractors, Inc. for Wastewater Treatment Plant, West Influent Pump Room Upgrades, General Construction. Term runs 270 days to substantial completion and 300 days to final completion from the notice to proceed. The cost is $1,341,300, and there are no renewals.
Resolution 10B is on the agenda. Communication 6C.
Memorandum from Christina Roseberry, Housing and Community Development Administrator, recommending a contract with Community Action Development Corporation of Bethlehem for North Side, 2027, Neighborhood Marketing and Branding Professional Planning Services and Planning Conceptual Services related to Friendship Park. Term runs December 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2022. The cost is $50,000, and there are no renewals.
Resolution 10C is on the agenda. Communication 6D.
Memorandum from Police Chief Michelle Cott with an attached resolution and agreement for the purchase of duty weapon, duty weapon by a retired officer of the Bethlehem Police Department pursuant to third-class city code. Retired officers may purchase their duty firearms at fair market value.
Resolution 10D is on the agenda. Communication 6E.
Memorandum from Edward Bascola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with R3 Construction, Inc. for Hectown Road Water Main Relocation. The term runs in the notice to proceed until December 31st, 2021. The cost is $772,700. Per a new change order, there are no renewals.
Resolution 10E is on the agenda. Communication 6F.
Memorandum from Michelle Michael Alco, Director of Public Works, recommending a contract with KC Mechanical Services for Roger Street Facility Construction Plumbing. The term runs 180 days. The cost is $174,000, and there are no renewals.
Resolution 10F is on the agenda. Communication 6G.
Memorandum from Michael Alco, Director of Public Works, recommending a contract with Billatier Electric, Inc. for Roger Street Facility Construction Electrical Work. The term runs 180 days. The cost is $135,921, and there are no renewals.
Resolution 10G is on the agenda. Communication 6H.
Memorandum from Michael Alco, Director of Public Works, recommending a contract with KC Mechanical Services, Inc. for Roger Street Facility Construction HVAC Work. Term runs 180 days. The cost is $127,000, and there are no renewals.
Resolution 10H is on the agenda. Communication 6I.
Memorandum from Darlene Heller, Director of Planning and Zoning, with an attached resolution authorizing application for a multimodal transportation fund grant of $985,500 from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in connection with the Broad Street Active Transportation Plan Phase 1.
Resolution 10I is on the agenda. Communication 6J.
Memorandum from Michael Alco, Director of Public Works, with an attached proposed ordinance amending Article 929A, titled Determination of Stormwater User Fee Credits and Appealing Stormwater Fee Determinations. The amendment adds credit determination tables, along with making conforming changes related to such credits.
The proposed ordinance will be on the November 19th agenda for first reading. Reports? I have no reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Reynolds and Councilwoman Grace, Ramsey Smith, and Karen Hillary and Rachel on your election officially. Councilwomen elect males, that's terrific. Administrative Order Number 35, I hereby reappoint Iris Linder, 21 West Door Street, Bethlehem, to Bethlehem Housing Authority. Disappointment is effective through October 2026.
The resolution to confirm is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Pass the 7-0.
Thank you. Administrative Order 36, I hereby reappoint Sabre Torre Verestro, 4477 Fairview Court, Emaus, to the Codes Boards of Appeal. This appointment is effective through November 2024.
The resolution to confirm is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken. Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Pass the 7-0.
Thank you. Administrative Order 37, I hereby appoint Karen Hevis, 1804 Jennings Street, Bethlehem, to the Water Health. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Patricia Zurich. This appointment is effective through January 2025.
The resolution to confirm is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Pass the 7-0.
That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Dr. Van Werken?
Community Development Committee met on Thursday, October 21st, at 6:00 PM in Town Hall. The committee held the annual financial accountability incentive reporting hearing required by Article 349 and reviewed economic development incentive reports submitted by the administration. The meeting was for informational purposes only, and no actions were taken.
Thank you. We have one ordinance for final passage this evening. Ordinance 8A.
An ordinance to the City of Bethlehem, Counties of Lehigh and Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the 2021 Capital Budget for Non-Utilities Bill 29/2021. Sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ramsey Smith.
Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Yasso. Sorry, I didn't realize we were here as we discussed this earlier.
Sorry for the brief interruption. Appreciate the time. So Agenda Item 8A. I did address Finance Committee meeting a few weeks ago about this transfer. The transfer did include some other... about this transfer. The, the transfer did, uh, include some other, uh, moving parts, but I only took issue with the cash reserve balance portion of it. Um, and I did address Finance Committee. Uh, it was not supported unanimously, so I wanted to address full counsel, uh, with, with my main concern being, uh, granting access to cash reserves in order to, uh, essentially fill, fill in the budget, um, that, that was underestimated. Um, now, the administration will, you know, uh, cite extraordinary circumstances, uh, you know, brutal economic conditions, uh, a strong cash position, a relatively low ask in terms of the overall cash. Uh, however, I think it, there are too many moving pieces. It's, it's too, uh, too circumstantial, um, even the, the quantifiable pieces to this. Uh, it, it's not like we're dealing with, uh, an ordinance parameter on, on the, the cash balance versus the amount. There, there's no real precedent set. Uh, in, in my opinion, the answer should be no. Uh, there, there should be no cash reserves. Remember, this was, uh, this was a, a budget. This was a pandemic budget, okay, that, uh, was already bolstered with, with cash reserves. And, uh, you know, I understand there are unforeseen, uh, economic factors and, and, and the budget was, was, was blown through. The other, uh, circumstances we'll talk about, I'm, I'm sure, are that the administration is up against it with this particular project. It's been a long time coming. Uh, there are climate issues that, that are at play with this as well. Uh, and obviously you guys are, you guys are, uh, approving a lot of, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the contracts already that have to do with this, the HVAC and, and everything that's already on here. So I do know they are up against it. I've worked with them to, to get as far as we could. Uh, but I, I just don't feel it's a good idea to, to, uh, to finish this budget with, 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 uh, cash balance and kind of open that door. I, I don't think it's a good idea at all, so, um, happy to answer any questions, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Yasso. Any other comments from the council? Dr. Van Werken?
I just wanted to say I agree with Mr. Yasso. I did not support this on the original vote and I will not be supporting it tonight. I do not think we should be taking cash reserves for this project. Thank you.
Ramsey Smith?
I just want, I just want to clarify. Is the amount of the cash reserves 150,000?
Yes.
Is that, okay. And, um, thank you for your comments. I, I agree. I, I hate to take money from cash reserves, but I do know this project is, is very, um, necessary and has been a long time coming. I used to live over by where the buildings were and they really were, are terrible eyesore and, um, not safe. But, um, let me just ask, is, are there any other alternatives? Aside, is there anything else we could do aside from the cash reserves, I guess?
Yeah. No, thank you. It's, it's a good question and, um, I guess response was, yeah, we had a pretty good debate and discussion during Finance Committee about the same subject that, um, we are, uh, in a pinch with this contract. And most of you know the backstory. Roger Street, uh, the buildings have been on the capital plan for over 10 years since I joined council 2010 and visited and toured. I thought, wow, this is, uh, something that needs to be handled. And like many things, it's gotten pushed back and pushed back and deferred. And we finally got underway and, uh, the buildings were demolished. There was asbestos in those removed prior to that. They were demolished successfully. And during that period, as Mike can speak to a little bit, I guess, during the designing phases and the bids, we started to see, as we've also talked a lot about and seen in the news everywhere, bids coming in very high, left and right, left and right. And, um, the bids were, um, for the whole project, a very small amount, but it was over 100, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And we did, um, huddle up and look for other options. What other accounts or what can we postpone or cancel? Uh, at this point, because of what was already been said by Controller Yassos, we don't, we can't cancel this project. It's, the buildings are down. We have workers there from our grounds department or grounds bureau, as well as our facilities and Streets Bureau that work out and that need, uh, this building to be put together in, in a timely manner. So the contract, the general contract was already approved. Um, the amount short is to cover the three contracts you have in front of you tonight, which is the electrical, uh, the HVAC, as well as a plumbing contracts. So we saw this as very much an extraordinary event that it's a small amount. The ask is 150,000 for a larger project. Uh, we reviewed other accounts. We did move money out of a pool capital account that we thought was, uh, unused and the ice shrink account, there was remnant when we did a thorough investigation of what other funding or projects could be canceled or postponed at this time and got it to that point. So the fact that it's a small amount on a large project, that our cash balances are stable, that this is aware, we do, we do not know, and you know that, we don't come to council asking for cash reserves, especially with our operating budgets, um, as well as our capital budgets. Um, another indication is that we've gone three years without filling up our accounts. And last year, normally it would have been a borrowing year, but because of the pandemic, we didn't do anything. So some of those accounts that may have been there to be able to take care of this are not there because they're running on empty because we've gone a third year without replenishing our capital accounts. So it's a number of things that have come together to put us in this position. We felt it was fair when we looked at, again, tho- those key factors, that it's, it's a one-time event, that we don't look, that this is an important project. We need to get this project done. It's a small ask. Our cash account is, uh, stable and that, that's why we're bringing counsel.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I would just, a couple of comments. One is I, I want to say thank you, Mr. Yasso, for his comments. Um, I think that if we take a look at this and it's 150,000, and we're talking about the pandemic and the pandemic's effect here on, um, this particular project. And because of the pandemic and the fact that, and supply issues and the fact that there are, as with everything, there are many more projects than there are bidders, which is driving up the cost of projects, partly directly related to the pandemic. And we're getting these ARP funds that are supposed to make up for lost money within the city. Now, that's indirect lost money between the city. And I think that if we said no to this 150,000 today, it would be 150,000 that would then just be spent out of those ARP funds in two months when we have, or whenever we approve the budget. Um, so it's a situation that if we take that 150,000 out of the cash balance now or whether or not we would take 150,000 out of the ARP funds that we're using to necessarily make up for this project, I don't think at the end of the day there is a difference between that. Um, I would say that if, if council feels strongly about that, that we should be taking 150,000 from somewhere else, that indirectly, we also have the option then during the budget process by which somebody could cut 150,000 and put it back in the cash balance away from where they think that money should be spent. Um, so there are different options either today or later on as far as if that, if that is something that somebody's looking to do. Um, but I'll be, I'll be supporting this 150,000 dollar transfer today. I think that it is a project that needs to get done. I absolutely think that Mr. Yasso, uh, is doing the right thing by talking about why we shouldn't, why taking money out of the cash balance is not necessarily our wisest option. Uh, but it is from a practical point of view, whether or not we take that money out right now or whether or not we approve it in the budget and push it off for two months with the weather issues and so on and so forth. Um, I don't see at the end of the day that there's much, much difference, but absolutely, just like we had a long conversation last year about the fact that we took a million dollars out of the cash balance to not have to make any more painful cuts or have to raise taxes anymore. It's not something we want to do. Our strong cash position allowed us the opportunity to do this. And when the pandemic came along and drove up the price of all these different projects, obviously that was not something that anybody wanted to do. And I know I've had conversations with Mr. Evans and Mr. Alkall about how do we drive the cost of this project down? They've gone through it. We've talked about it before and, and I'm, I'm comfortable approving the 150,000. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Passes 5-2.
You have no new ordinances this evening. We do resolutions. Resolution 10A.
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute an agreement to effectuate the transfer of a city-issued handgun to Simon Bodie, retired city police officer. The resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Passes 7-0. Resolution 10B.
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate or hereby authorized to execute an agreement with R3 Construction, Inc. for Hectown Road Water Main Relocation. Resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Passes 7-0. Resolution 10C.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to move back a little bit in our agenda here to make sure we get this correct. Um. Sorry, everybody. Moving, there's a little miscommunication here. We're going to start again with our voting through 10A.
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Brendan Stanton, Inc., DBA BSI Electrical Contractors for Wastewater Treatment Plant Pump Room Upgrades, Electrical Construction. Resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Passes 7-0. Resolution 10B.
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Eastern Environmental Contractors, Inc. for Wastewater Treatment Plant Influent Pump Room Upgrades, General Construction. Resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Passes 7-0. Resolution 10C.
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Community Action Development Corporation of Bethlehem for Northside 2027 Neighborhood Marketing and Branding Services and Planning and Conceptual Services related to Friendship Park. Resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken.
Discussion? Dr. Van Werken?
Yes, I was wondering if Ms. Carter could just explain a little bit more about this. I always have concerns when we, um, float a contract for, um, one community amenity that, and we have very many community amenities that perhaps might need this type of input as well. So I was hoping you could just explain a little bit for us. Thank you.
Sure. Um, several years ago, we started working with the community to, to develop the Northside 2027 Neighborhood Plan. We had a, pre-pandemic, a robust community response and wanting to be part of that conversation. And there were five goals identified, uh, two of which are included in the contract before you. One, um, goal number one was a safe and vibrant public realm. And that was about creating safe neighborhoods and improving public spaces, Friendship Park. And the other one, another goal of the five was building on the resident-driven vision for the neighborhood and creating a brand. And so as part of the LRTA, when we had furthered the concept of crafting the LRTA for the neighborhood and engaged Northampton County and the Bethlehem Area School District, Northampton County wanted to know what the city was going to put into it. If you recall, at the time, we only give up 10% of our taxes. We only abate 10% for this neighborhood, unlike the county and school district that abate 50. And so as a offset to that, we said we'd invest funds into these neighborhoods, into this neighborhood directly on an annual basis through our budgeting process. So these are the funds that we are proposing using with our partner, CADCB, Community Action Development Corp. of Bethlehem. We partnered very well with them on the South Side. They're doing good work with us in Northside 2027. And these were the two areas identified by the ongoing committees that came out of this planning process to, um, look at both Friendship Park, as I stated, and branding of the neighborhood.
Would there be, um, a, a ancillary South Side correlation to this process with the South Side LRTA?
So we've been doing this process on the South Side since the Sasaki Plan in the late 90s. Um, we have the MPP on the South Side in which we have been able to raise with CADCB hundreds of thousands of dollars, not just 50, um, to invest back in that neighborhood. We've used the, those dollars for the last 20 years to raise millions of dollars in investment. Projects like the Skate Plaza, the Greenway, um, small business investment, facade improvements, housing improvements, the list is, is significant on the South Side.
And I know it might be more of a challenge, but of course, having this community identified target, is there a process in place in the South Side for, and I know this is, we're talking about Northside 2027. It's a discreet thing. But are we also kind of having the same process happening on the South Side, allowing the neighborhood, however you want to define the neighborhood, to determine their own goals and then using direct LRTA money to support those neighborhood spoken goals?
We've been doing that with South Side Vision and Community Action Development Corp. of Bethlehem since like the late 90s. There is a community committee. There are community, uh, there's a community advisory committee and then individual committees that vet projects and determine how to spend those dollars. Um, that, that's what we modeled Northside 2027 off of.
Okay.
It just has been such a good process for us on the South Side. We wanted to replicate that success.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate it.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, just to add to that, and, and Ms. Carter did, did take the words out of my mouth. As far as Northside 2027, the, the model is a lot of what's been done with South Side Vision 2014, um, as far as bringing the partners together and things like that. And, uh, one of the things too, that is, we've run into on the North Side with 2027 is that people want to do things. We want to paint things. We want to redesign things. But until you don't want to do individual projects that have different color schemes, the whole nine yards. So this is something that the people feel very strongly about. Um, so I know that in the committee conversations, it's come up a lot. But just to add to Ms. Carter's point is, um, you know, a lot of the conversations has been about what has gone on in the South Side, what has worked on the South Side, and how do we create that same type of energy that has been created on 3rd and 4th and 5th Street through South Side Vision 2014 and all of the, all of the planning with the, with the neighborhoods and with CACLV.
Mr. Groan?
Thank you, President Waldron. I, I just wanted to, to say, uh, especially directed to you, Dr. Van Werken, um, since you asked the question. I've been, the reason why I'm here sitting now is because my involvement with Vision. Um, I, 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 it was, uh, the, all the committees, like, like Alicia said, the main committee, the steering committee and all the committees, it's all made by, uh, city leaders and residents. So I've been, I, you know, I took a lot of pride in my city, uh, just by being part of that committee because I felt like we was empowering and we were, you know, the administration was involved in all of it, but they were there to listen and they really listened and they did, you know, we wanted lights. We wanted sidewalks. We wanted facades. Everything. After-school programming. I mean, you name it, so much. And I was, I was very pleased, uh, with Councilman Reynolds' push for the, the North Side because I know it, it does, that, and, and that is really the, the result that it works so well in the South Side. And I am so glad, um, I appreciate the administration taking that, that, that part. And, and I'm glad it's happening in the North Side because there's a lot of old and depleted, um, housing stock and commercials in the North Side. So I, I, I know it will do it all over again in the North Side. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Werken.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye. Passes 7-0. Resolution 10B.
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate are hereby auth- authorized to execute an agreement to effectuate the transfer of a city-issued handgun to Simon Bodie, retired city police officer. The resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Werken.
Discussion? Please call the roll. Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten E.
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate or hereby authorized to execute an agreement with R. Three Construction, Inc. for Hectown Road Water Main relocation work. The resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Wert.
Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten F.
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with K. C. Mechanical Services, Inc. for Roger Street Facility Construction Plumbing Services. The resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Wert.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Groan. I'm sorry, Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten G.
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Billatier Electric, Inc. for Roger Street Facility Construction Electrical Work. Resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Wert.
Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten H.
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller under such other city officials is deemed appropriate by the city solicitor are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with K. C. Mechanical Service, Inc. for Roger Street Facility Construction HVAC work. The resolution is sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Wert.
Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten I.
Be resolved by the City of Bethlehem of Northampton County hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be used for the Broad Street Act of Transportation Plan and be it further resolved that all appropriate official officials are authorized to execute related agreements, documents.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. I will accept the motion in a second to consider Resolutions ten J. through ten O. as a group.
So moved.
Still move, second.
Motion by Dr. Van Wert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Negron, third and fourth by Mr. Callahan. And ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert. Mr. Callahan.
Aye, aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes eight zero. And ask the clerk to please read Resolution ten J. through ten O.
Certificates of appropriateness under the Act of the Pennsylvania Legislature in Bethlehem ordinance are hereby granted for eight twenty-two East Fourth Street to replace thirteen windows, three oh six Broadhead Avenue to add vinyl signage to the front windows, nine twenty-five Prospect Avenue to replace wood casing windows and replace two doors, one seventeen East Third Street to replace awning fabric and add a new business name logo, three twenty-one Wyandotte Streets to demolish existing steps and replace with a deeper landing, four oh seven, four oh nine Vine Street to restructure the street level, front facade with new windows and doors and a stucco exterior. The resolutions are sponsored by Mr. Cologne and Dr. Van Wert.
Clerk, please call, pardon me.
Can I just say one thing? I I just wanted to say how much I appreciate now that we get the full minutes from the HARB meetings. While they may be a bit daunting in terms of the density, I've learned so much just by reading them, and it really helps us understand what they struggle with. And it also makes me understand how much care is put into these decisions and how much thanks I have for the HARB members and all of our historic boards for the work that they do to help our city maintain its beauty and its historic grace. So, I just want to say thanks to whoever helped power that we now get these and can read them. I hope we can get them way in advance of the meetings, but I really find them useful. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. New business. I will accept the motion to set the date for the twenty twenty-two budget on Tuesday, December twenty-first of twenty twenty-one at seven P. M. in Town Hall. Sir, seeking a motion in a second to schedule the adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And just to clarify, the budget has not been presented to council. We're just going through formality of scheduling the date in which we will adopt the final budget as proposed and potentially amended by council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Groan.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Cologne.
Aye.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye, passes seven zero. Any other new business from members of council? Ms. Ramsey Smith?
I just want to say congratulations to our health director, Christian Wemmich, for being the grand marshal in the great parade this past Sunday, and kudos, and a huge thank you to her and all the healthcare professionals, especially Dr. Van Wert, for all they've been through through the last year and a half. It's been daunting. And I think it was great that we're able, as a city, to come together and celebrate them and, you know, express our gratitude. It was a great parade. It was a great day in Bethlehem. So, I say that was wonderful. And kudos to Councilman Meadows. As being mayor-elect, I look forward to working with you as you sit on the other side of the table. Thank you.
Any other new business from members of council this evening?
I I I did miss the president.
Yes, Mr. Callahan.
I I just want to congratulate everybody that won yesterday also. I think it, you know, I think our city is going to be heading in a great direction. And I applaud in everybody that participated, even the people that lost in county and state races. So, it's a great process we have here in the United States, and, you know, everybody, being a part of it is a great thing. So, I just want to thank everybody that participated, and I want to congratulate all the winners. Thank you.
Thank you. The twenty twenty-two budget meeting schedule has been set. Our first meeting will be next Tuesday at, on November ninth. All the meetings take place here and are at six P. M. Our first budget meeting will be discussing water, sewer, public works, and the non-unutility capital fund and the fire department. On Monday, November twenty-second, will be our second meeting. We'll discuss the budgets for police, community, economic development. Third budget meeting is November twenty-ninth. That will be the golf course fund, administration, elected officials, the general fund, and civic and debit service. And we have another one set if needed on November thirtieth. And our last, as we just scheduled, pardon me, our backup meeting is on December fourteenth. Our final budget meeting would be November thirtieth. And all those dates and information can be found on the City Council website. Any other new business this evening? Thank you all for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.